Thank you all for being here. And we need to first approve the consent agenda, which will get us into session efficiently.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any comments or discussion this evening? All right. The consent agenda is where matters of routine and technical issues are put on so that we can dive deeper into other issues during the meeting and save a little bit of time. If you want further information about it, either check the packet here on Board Docs or the printed-out packet, Agenda, that is on the table at the back of the room. All right. Missy?
Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. Tivarcounas?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Excellent. And then this evening, we have some members of the public here before us to give us some information. We're always happy when the public is here to join us. It's always like to clarify, though, that this is not a time for a conversation between the Board and the public, but for a time for the Board to absorb the information that you want to share with us. And I think a lot of you here just talk about some of our land development issues. So we're going to take your information, and it'll be helpful to us as we proceed with future discussions. And if you have any questions that require an answer from us, we will not be able to give them to you at this time, but we will get them to you in the future by email or a future agenda item, and we'll make sure to keep you all in the loop on what's going forward. There's a three-minute limit on participation, and we do have a timer to help you guide your comments. And we hope you understand these parameters that we must follow and abide by. So our new secretary, Michelle Stecker, will be calling up the names.
Sure. So first, we've got Tanya Ripith here to talk about Malloy Park housing and current residents.
And then when the red light is on your microphone, you know that it's working, and it's not really for us to hear your voice in this room, but it helps the video quality considerably. So thank you very much for being here.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you for hearing me out. My name is Tanya Ripith, and I am wife to Eric, who is here with me tonight, and mother to Grady and Cooper. Eric is in his fifth year of teaching at VSSA there in Malloy Park, and both my boys, twins, started sixth grade there this year. This is their second year there, and they're thriving in the school and with the Nordic program. I, myself, am with Vale Health Hospital as the Senior Director of Human Resources and have been there for 10 years, so I have a great understanding of the housing challenges in our community. We purchased our three-bedroom home in 2017, so somewhat recent compared to the other residents in Malloy Park, and we've loved our time in Malloy Park. As two of us are students there at VSSA, and one of us is a teacher there at VSSA, it's very convenient. We love it. So tonight, bless you, I make an appeal to you all to please consider the families who live in Malloy Park and have made this space home. My family and I support expanding housing for the school district employees and ask that you hold off on requiring current residents to relocate until six months prior to construction truly commences. Based on my limited knowledge of fully creating a full housing plan and strategy, I do feel that six months' notice from the time of breaking ground in Malloy is fair for both the district and the current residents. We are open to any reasonable process that gives us the notice we deserve and the protections that you all require. There's a sense that you'd rather have us out now to potentially avoid a similar situation that occurred, I believe, in Gypsum when you asked those tenants at that time to vacate, and you were met with resistance. Possibly not you individually, but collectively as the Board. You have our commitment to fully cooperate when it is time to begin construction. Until this time, please allow us to remain in our homes as long as possible, as this will provide minimal disruption to my two sixth graders, my husband, and family as a whole. As for our future, we would very much like to remain in Malloy Park and be your first new residents, if possible. However, if we move on to purchasing our home elsewhere, this opportunity will be significantly diminished. We would like to fully understand what would be available to us all in the new Malloy Housing Development so that we can opt in once we know those details. We understand that creating the new housing development plan is still a work in progress, but with three of the four of us at VSSA, we would really ask and like to wait to commit to new housing for our family as long as possible. We hope to maximize the opportunity here to get back to Malloy Park permanently. Additionally, there are not great options for comparable replacement housing in the area by Malloy Park and Minterne at this time, and so moving down Valley is our really, or out of the county even, is the hardship that our family will sustain if we're asked to move sooner than absolute necessary. Our ideal scenario would be to rent while this project is constructed and then move back to Malloy Park once complete. Please support our family's desire to remain in our home with the six months' notice to vacate once the development application or breaking ground, I don't know the language for which comes first, is submitted, and then commence construction. And again, I thank you for your time. In my role, it's much easier to be the person on the receiving end to help people through things rather than speak up and voice my own concerns, so thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you for coming and for stepping out of your comfort zone. We appreciate that. We understand this is a challenging process and timeline that we're going through. So next?
Thank you, Tanya. Next, we have Eric Ripith, also here to speak on the Malloy Park project.
Did I press the red button or start? It's already starting. All right. I have two letters here. One, I have on behalf of Spencer Messer, who is a teacher at Battle Mountain High School, who has recently moved into the Malloy Park. And then I have a letter for myself. I'll try to, my time's already going. All right. My name is Spencer Messer, and I teach English in Avid and coach track and cross-country at Battle Mountain High School. This is my third year teaching at Battle Mountain High School and my second year living in Malloy Park. I apologize for not reading this personally, but I'm in Dallas for an Avid conference, and my wife is working a shift at her second job at Beaver Creek. In the spring of 2018, my wife and I had the opportunity to buy a trailer in Malloy Park. We both loved our jobs, but the price of renting here on top of our student loans seemed crippling. Malloy Park seemed to be our only feasible way to continue our lives here in the valley without moving back to the front range. We knew the risk of development when we chose to buy our home, and even talked about how much risk we felt comfortable taking on. But we did all of this with the hope of trying to use our money wisely and create a financially responsible way to stay here. Honestly, development is happening much faster than we ever thought possible, and we are just over one year into a four-year mortgage with little hopes of selling it for enough to get close to breaking even. I understand the housing shortage in our area, so I fully understand and even support creating affordable housing. I just hope that you would take this process in a slow and cautious manner. Even in my short time here, I've seen housing developments rise and fall, and most often experienced drastic slowdowns that leave people displaced and land unused. My worry is that in an attempt to have progress for the sake of progress, we will be forced to move out, and then the land will be vacant for a large chunk of time, which is the opposite of affordable housing and truly taking care of employees in an equitable manner. As you make considerations about the future of my current home and neighborhood, please consider adjusting our move-out date to correspond with the time when a full plan has been created, agreed upon, and approved by the full Board, community, and the town of Minterne. Also, please consider phasing the development so as many employees have affordable housing as possible without displacing all 14 of our families for a year, just to create 25 houses and then only developing 25 per year until the land is fully used up. I hope as development moves forward, an equitable position for all can be found for the growth of our district and for the retention of highly qualified teachers and involved community members like ourselves and the other residents in Malloy Park. Finally, from the bottom of our hearts, regardless of how things move forward, thank you for allowing us to make our voices and opinions heard in this manner. Also, thank you for all choosing to help support and represent our school district, employees, students, and families, and your commitment to serve on the Board. Kindly Spencer Messer. Then mine, the residents of Malloy Park do not want to be a thorn in your side, an obstacle for your future plans, and bad press that would bring a damper on the school district. We would like to be recognized as devoted employees for the Eagle County School District that dedicate our lives to the education, safety, and well-being of Eagle County children every day. We are teachers, bus drivers, and custodians who have families, our newly-married couples, and retirees who work hard in the valley at the school district, and many who also have second and third jobs trying to do what's best for our children and family and trying to stay in the valley. We agree that the housing in the valley is a problem since we live with that every day and are behind a solution to assist other employees in their struggle to find affordable housing. We are behind your plan to bring more housing to employees in Malloy Park. We only ask that when you have gone through the entire process of establishing a working development and when you establish a concrete date to break ground, you let us know that we must move. We will move out of our houses and assist our neighbors in the process. We respect your efforts and hope you understand our plight in the process also. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Next up, Teresa Carullo, here to speak about Malloy Park.
Hi. My name is Teresa Carullo. I am a veteran teacher of 20 years in the school district. I just wanted to introduce myself because of the fact that I did send a letter out, an I am poem. I know that all of you actually wrote I am poems last week during your last Board meeting, so I wanted to give you my I am poem in anticipation of that. I think I wanted to focus on just putting a face to a name. My husband was a teacher for 15 years, but when we actually moved to Malloy Park, he was offered his same position back here at Gypsum Creek Middle, and we knew that it would take up too much of our family time to do the commute, so we took the chance, and he found a different position. So we already lost his value in the school district because of that. And many times when we do come down to Gypsum and to visit, we see students that say, hey, Mr. Carullo, what are you doing now? And he says, well, I switched positions. And they were like, oh, you were such a good teacher. So I, as well as all of the residents, would like a concrete date. My intention for that is because I have a daughter who is a sophomore in high school and a son who will be entering high school. It would give us an opportunity to save more money for a down payment for a house. I mean, it may seem like a couple of months to you, but that money means a lot to us to be able to put that in there. We have a high deductible insurance program, so even though I gross a fair amount of money, my net pay is just a little bit over my husband's at his new job where he just started, and we're making $6,000. We come home with between $6,500 a month after everything is taken out, and trying to maneuver that with medical costs, as you may remember from my I am poem, that it's really hard. So we appreciate you considering giving us a firm date when the district, the developer, and the town of Minterne have approved the actual ground digging. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming and putting a face to the name and to your poem. We appreciate, which we do read all the letters that are sent to us and included in the packet from you and from other people.
Thank you, Teresa. Next up, we've got Carrie Bangston here to talk about Malloy Park.
I feel like we're redundant here tonight. Good evening. For those of you that are new to the Board, my name is Carrie Bangston. I have been teaching in Eagle County schools for 13 years and have been lucky enough to live in Malloy Park for all 13 of those years. So tonight, as you gather more information on the Malloy Park development, I'd just like to share a few thoughts. First of all, kids first. That's why you and I are all here, serving our county. And keeping quality teachers and employees in our school district directly benefits the kids in our valley. The long-term goal of Malloy Park Project is to do just that, finding ways to keep teachers like me and my neighbors in this valley even as we grow our families. As you work towards this long-term goal, I just ask that please do not preemptively remove us from our homes before the project is ready to get underway. I just ask that you know with certainty that shovels will be in the ground before we have to take our trailers and leave. A year ago, we, Malloy Park residents, were right here, asking for information and asking for a timeline, and you gave us one, which was wonderful. But a lot has changed between then and now, and I feel like in a lot of ways, we've put the cart before the horse. We got our timeline, we got our move-out date, and then everything slowed down. We said, all right, let's make the housing master plan, which I think is all super-wise. And again, I completely support the end goal, but right now, our move-out date does not seem realistic, and this in-between and not-knowing is incredibly stressful. We ask ourselves the questions, where will we live in seven months? In May, we were told that we would get some sort of priority in the new development, which is wonderful, and that's our goal, to buy into whatever development is created in Malloy Park and continue teaching and serving the county. But what will that development be? A condo, a town home? How much will it cost? When will those homes be ready? How do I know if there is actually a space for my family? Should I look elsewhere in the valley for housing, or should I look for a short-term rental or a long-term rental? All these questions run through our minds pretty much every night as we're trying to figure out what we should be doing in the next seven months or six months. Perhaps the answers to these questions exist, but they have not been published for us yet. So in some ways, my dream would be a redo, to rip up the current letter stating our removal on June 30th and say, all right, when the district, the developer, the town of Minterne are all in agreement, when the development plans are official and a solid timeline is in place, then give us our six months, and like Eric stated, we will peacefully take our trailers and be ready for the next step. We all know that the development is moving forward, but as there is a lot of gray area, that's what we're just really asking for, is that please don't move us before it's time. So thank you for hearing me, for considering canceling our current move-out date and giving us six months' notice when everything is official and ready to roll. Thank you all.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks, Carrie. Next up, we have Pam Ross, here to speak about Malloy.
My name is Pam Ross. I almost didn't come tonight, so I didn't write anything down except that I have questions. And my questions are, with your planning, have you considered another entrance or exit to Malloy Park? Because we only have one entrance and one exit. And if you're planning on building 120 or 160 units or homes that are worth $300,000 or $400,000, you're going to lose employees. You'll also put people in danger who is living out there for a potential fire. Last couple of years, we had two fires at the entrance of Malloy Park, two on the other side of the river. One, I noticed, and I reported to the fire department. My concern is, whether I live there or not, is that there are going to be people in danger. If you take 120, 160 units, times three, for people getting in and out of Malloy Park, and that is a real concern. We don't want another Paradise, California. Second of all, in June, we can still have a foot of snow. So yeah, if we try to move in March, April, May, June, that's going to be real difficult. It's going to put people in danger as well. The idea of getting your plans, setting them up, have them concrete as much as you can on the real estate. I do not disagree with the fact that we need housing for the workers in this valley. We certainly need it. And not paying $2,000 or $2,500 a month, you're going to lose people. Now, I don't mean to be antagonistic, but I worry about the lives of those people that will be living out there if we cannot. I guess that's about all I have to say, except that if you can give us at least to the end of summer, do it in phases out there. Again, my respect to all of you, but I think you need to think strongly about the safety of the people out there as well, the kids, the school, for sure. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for coming this evening. We have one more?
Thank you, Pam. And finally, we have Todd Chehan, here to talk about staff and student appreciation from Matt Earl.
Excellent. I'm just going to make a quick plug for our third agenda item here, which we're going to be getting a lot of information on staff, from staff this evening, that may have been new since our last meeting. If anybody wants to stick around, that'll be coming up. Todd?
Thank you, Board members, for your time tonight. I was asked by one of my team members to share a little bit of information with you guys about some wonderful staff and students we have, to give them honor and appreciation. So I'm going to read a letter. This is from Matt Earl. He is an application support specialist for Eagle County School District. Before Thanksgiving break this year, I had the opportunity to work with Nicole Dool, a teacher at Eagle Valley High, and Parker French, a freshman at Eagle Valley High. Nicole put in a ticket regarding an error message her students received when trying to view a video on YouTube. The technology department had been battling this issue for some time without a solution. I would like to commend Nicole for her patience and resolution in the troubleshooting of the process. We ran through many screens and options together while she was in the middle of teaching class with over 20 students during a stressful time. Her calm, happy demeanor helped me run through theory after theory with minimal pressure. Enter Parker French. Nicole had assigned her students a task to watch the video and follow up with some questions with additional research. Parker spoke up and mentioned that he was not able to view the video on YouTube. We found out later that many other students were not able to view it as well, but were afraid to speak up or assume something that they had done. Parker spent his class period troubleshooting the issue with Nicole and me while we tried to complete the assignment with a workaround he came up with using his personal Google account and phone. We contacted Google Support, and they were no help, but Parker tried the steps that I sent him anyways, and it was not successful. Google had given up, but Parker had not. He persisted. He finally found a solution, and he sent me an email with the steps for me to try, which he ran through at the end and was able to view the video from his school account. We also had Dan Dougherty try the same steps Parker sent because he was experiencing the same issue, and these steps resolved Dan's issue as well. In my opinion, Parker French has exhibited the global-ready skills of critical thinking, adaptability, initiative, and curiosity and imagination. His persistence in this manner and the willingness to attempt to solve a problem is a great example of the skills we want to see our students possess. It is my hope that the Board of Education will acknowledge the work of Ms. Dool and Parker French and applaud them for their global-ready skills. Thank you for your time, Matt Earl.
That was excellent. Thank you for sharing that with us, and it's good to know we've got the tenacity out there to overcome technological problems. We appreciate the effort in the classroom and with the tech team. All right. That will bring us to the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Madam President. Jump right into some recent activities that I've been up to. So for new Board members, I'll provide this information at each of our meetings, just so you know what kind of meetings I've been attending and who I've been working with. I did get a chance to meet with the Executive Director of Bravo Vale. The intent of that meeting was to learn more about their programming and figure out how we can expand some of their music education programs into more of our schools. Presently, they're only serving two, but we'd like to expand that to get more opportunity to learn piano and violin. I also met with Colorado Representative Dylan Roberts. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss with him potential changes to the school finance formula in the upcoming legislative session, which will begin in January. I shared with him some of my concerns about changes to the cost-of-living factor and wanted him to understand that any changes to the formula of that nature would be devastating to our school district and most of the districts in his region. I shared the same information with Senator Donovan as well, but we did not meet in person. I got a chance to meet with Nico Brown, who represents Vale Health in Howard Head. Talked to him about some of the programming that we're doing that aligns with health services and trying to expand internships and programs with Vale Health. Additional activities include a lot of budget work. Thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Chelsea. We've assembled the budget team a couple of times, and the intent of that is to start projecting what our budget's going to look like for the coming year. I attended the CASB Conference, same one that you guys were at last week, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. Youth Power 365 Rural After-School Conference was held a few weeks ago up in Beaver Creek. There were folks there from 25 different states. The intent was to share with those individuals the program model that we have developed with Youth Power, so our Power Hours program, our Copa Soccer program, the close relationship that we have with Youth Power 365, and the benefit that our students receive as a result of that partnership. So we had a lot of folks there to share ideas about what's working and how they can learn from us. I got to speak with Rotary Club Eagle a few weeks ago. That was a good opportunity for me to explain more about our school district. They had a lot of questions for me as a new superintendent, so it was my pleasure to be a guest of theirs, and they had a nice breakfast. Edwards Development Group met a couple of weeks ago, right before Thanksgiving. This group is trying to figure out specifically the west end of Edwards, what type of development opportunities might exist, what kind of transportation or infrastructure changes might need to occur. So I was there with our Transportation Director, Bradley Caravoo, and he advocated very strongly for our school buses and the transportation needs of our students, so I was happy to see him there. And I'm in the middle of mid-year school visits. I've got 17 schools to visit, and I've seen eight so far. My intent to visit the schools is to share with them what changes we've made this year in response to the feedback I collected from them in the spring. I visited all the schools in April and May and had a huge list of things that they wanted to see some changes on. So I'm sharing with them some of those changes that we are making, but also collecting their feedback on how things are going. So I've had some great visits, and I've got a few more scheduled in coming weeks. And that's it for me. Madam President, back to you.
Great. Thank you very much. Generally, we begin our Board reports, and I start at one end, we wrap around, and I finish, but I'm going to just flip it just a little bit tonight because this is our first official meeting with everybody sworn in and the full new team here, and I'm just thrilled about it. We spent four days together in Colorado Springs, which we'll talk more about later, but it was a huge jumpstart in getting to work together, and I just wanted to take a minute to share a little bit about these new team members to help everybody get to know them as I did. First, Missy, we couldn't do without her, any of it. She's kind, diligent, dedicated, attention to detail, just makes it all happen, and thank you so much, Missy, for everything. Phil, you're calm and thoughtful and a living example of hearts and minds, data and soul together, I think, and I look forward to continue working together over the next couple of years. Shelley Jarno, here. She's just promoted to Vice President, and I'm very glad to have her sitting here on my left hand and working with her closely. I think we're going to be a good balance for each other. I respect her commitment to family and to achievement for all children. She's passionate and tenacious. Her years of experience on the Board are valuable, as well as professional and life experience and wisdom that she brings to the team. And so Michelle Stecher was then now promoted into the role of Secretary, and we're grateful for that additional responsibility that she's taken on. She's only been on the Board for the first full year. She just finished that, beginning her second year, so we appreciate her stepping up. She's an excellent liaison between her professional work at Mountain Youth and the work we do here on the Board. Her dedication and commitment to all kids is evident in everything she does. Her warm and sunny smile makes her even more of an asset, and we appreciate her here. Fernando, he's the next veteran. He's been with us just for a few months. His charm and sense of humor makes him a delight to work with. His ability and desire to connect with people of all sorts will bring a previously unheard voice to our work. The word I think of when I think of him is potential, and I look forward to watching his career over the years and his growth. Kelly Alter, the word I think of her when I look at her is energy. Her energy and intelligence make her more than able to tackle the challenge of board work. Her enthusiasm and willingness to do what it takes will make her a valuable member of our team. Her experience in our schools and her work with EFAC over the years adds additional Her experience in our schools and her work with EFAC over the years adds additional depth to her board resume, and I'm really glad to have her aboard. And Lucila Tivarcunas, I'm pleased to welcome another intelligent woman to our team. Lou has an easygoing nature and a deep bicultural understanding. She's a very caring nature and a strong sense of family, and this, coupled with her knowledge of and experience in our schools, makes her another excellent addition to our board, who deepens our diversity and our access to the Latino community. We're very grateful for you stepping up. And Ted, last but not least, helping to bring more gender balance to our board. We're really happy to have Ted. He's a gentle and kind family man who has superior academic credentials and a deep experience in a variety of areas. I feel like this list is going to be short here, but instruction, curriculum, management of personnel, and technology, which is very impressive, and we're very lucky to have him on the board as a source of knowledge and experience and a cool head. So thank you all for joining the team, and I'm just excited for the years ahead. Two more years till I'm term limited, so I'm starting to feel a little bit of like, oh, my time's running out. All right, so now we'll go to our general board reports, and we're going to move the CASB stuff into a little bit later on, so just anything else we may have done besides CASB, and we'll start with Michelle.
Sure. So just a couple of other events that I've gotten to be involved with really in the past few days. A couple of nights ago, Riverwalk Theater opened up their doors for a documentary put together by a group called Sober and Stoked, and it was about a number of adventure athletes around the country that have struggled with different addictions, mostly substance use and alcoholism, and how they've overcome that and they're in recovery. I think the best part about the event, besides nearly filling the theater, was the dialogue afterwards about opportunities and challenges in our resort community with perceptions and norms and what opportunities we can provide to have more support for those that are struggling. And then I just have to say, yesterday was a big success in our community. If you hadn't heard, it was Colorado Gives Day. Over 50 local nonprofits, many of whom partner very closely with the school district, banded together to do fundraising on this National Day of Giving and collectively raised over $1 million for local programs and services, again, many that impact our students and our families. So that's great to celebrate.
Sorry, we'll come back to CASB. CASB was quite a project, so we're not, no one was shirking their responsibilities. Ted?
I'm talking about CASB now?
No, just anything that you might have done besides, you can just say no board report, because we...
No, I don't have any board reports.
Perfect.
Couple of weeks ago, I was able to be a judge at the speech and debate at Eagle Valley High School, and it was my first time doing it. I thought it was great to see these young adults, just listen to them, I've been so passionate about what they have to say, and it was a very rewarding experience, so I really enjoyed doing that. And a couple of days ago, I met with some parents and teachers at Eagle Valley Elementary School, and I heard about they are starting this program about recycling, so they are taking over recycling at the school. They're putting trash cans in every classroom. They're actually teaching the kids from kindergarten to fifth how to recycle, the whole thing at the lunch room, so I thought it was very cool that they're taking over that and teaching the kids how to make the world a better world, so.
I only have a couple of events or updates. That on Monday, I went to Brush Creek Elementary, and, oh, man, there was all the kids just singing, and it was just amazing. It was very packed, and whoever was there could also see it, but it was amazing. It was great just to hear those kids sing, and it was just amazing. And then also, I went to the Berry Creek Middle School, one, and the way the kids play those instruments, it's like, oh, my God, I wish I could do that, but it was also amazing. So those are only my two reports that I can remember. Oh, before I forget, tomorrow, so I look at you and remember, the Bright Future Foundation is having their buddy-mentor holiday party, and this is my, who I believe my third one that I go out with my buddy and celebrate, so kudos to the Bright Future Foundation on that. Thanks.
Besides CASB, I think the only meeting that I attended was district accountability that was down here in this room. We heard from Katie Jarno, Dr. Jarno, about Tier One instruction and an update on the math committee, and then also Dan Dougherty gave an update about communications and Chris Elliott about special ed. So I think that's it.
That's great. Between the Thanksgiving holiday and our trip to Colorado Springs, everyone is quite busy. I was able to attend the Gibson Elementary Staff Meeting, which I always enjoy, Mitch is a great leader, and I got to stick around a little bit and watch them do some work on improving math instruction, the teachers first acted as students and then debriefed and turned around and approached the problem from a teacher perspective, and I'm always impressed with the professionalism and the energy and commitment the teachers put into improving their craft. And then just some time spent with Phil on agenda planning, prepping for this meeting and prepping for our days down there in the Springs, which we'll talk about. And if I can beg the indulgence of we could do our number three item here first with the Malloy Park information, since people are sticking around to hear that presentation, I think that would be the right thing to do, if you're ready, Sandy. Oh, while she's moving, new and old business is on the agenda here, and we'll be working, rolling into the holidays, right? So our next meeting is scheduled to be January 11th, and we'll be adding a few things. If there's anything anybody needs, board members to add on from older and new business, we can circle back to this at the end of the meeting, if you think of anything, while we're going to be creating this agenda for a month from now. Looks like Sandy's almost ready.
I was going to turn it onto the agenda, so it's up here for people to view, but we need to show it. So before... I didn't get the agenda up on here. Okay, so just following up on a meeting a couple of months ago about whether to extend the deadline for Malloy Park residents to move out or not, and at that time, there was some discussion about waiting until we got more information. And so we recently met with the individual doing the survey that was sent out to employees, and it's been open and closed, and she has the raw data, but isn't releasing any of that until after she scrubs it and is able to actually do all the cross-tabulating for it. And so we don't really have a lot of that. We do know that we have, we had a great response rate on it, which is really exciting, pretty high on that. So I think that we're going to be able to get a lot of great information from it. We met with her, as well as the Land Resource Committee, last week, and again, kind of just went through some basic information that she was willing to share with us about those results. And at that meeting, the Land Resource Committee talked about not really making a decision at this point to extend. A lot of it is what does that timeframe look like or anything? And so tonight was made a discussion item, really to talk about what that should look like, and their recommendation is not to change the date at this time, but to wait until after the survey results are complete. And I'm still waiting to get confirmation if that's going to be the first January meeting or the second. But we don't have any solid additional information to show what that would look like for the development of Malloy Park. But you've heard the residents talk tonight, and recommendation is to extend that due date to the six months prior to the development of the property. From the district standpoint, we are legally required to give a six-month notice, and so at this point, we have the six-month notice given, which is the June 30th, and from there on out, we can extend the date incrementally based on what you see fit, as long as they always have a six-month period of notification. So part of the recommendation tonight from the residents is about, as soon as we know, give them six months, which would be correct, because we have to have a minimum of a six-month period.
So could you... Well, so if we give them six months right now, but then we figure out that they can stay two more months, do you have to start from scratch and give them another six months? Or can we just sort of month-to-month let them stay?
As long as they always have a six-month notice. So if it's June 30th right now and you wanted to extend it to August 31st, you could give that notice now, because they would still have a six-month...
So we have to decide to extend a full six months?
As long... Yeah. As long as there's always that six-month period. You couldn't wait until like June 30th and then say, oh, now you can move out in August. Like, you don't want to just have that two-month window. You have to make sure it's at least six months at a time.
Obviously, it's not our intention or, you know, we don't want to have to move anyone out of there sooner than they need to. On the flip side, we want to give enough notice that if they need to leave, that, and it's going to impact the moving forward on this project, you know, we don't want to be telling them, telling you a few months before you need to leave, that you need to go find someplace else to live, and that it's at a time of year when... So, I mean, obviously, none of us are, you know, if you could live there till the day before they break ground, great, we would love that, but we also have a responsibility to get that going and redeveloped and house more of our teachers. And, you know, I mean, it sounds like legally, we can sort of revisit this maybe monthly and say, you know, does it make sense to extend another month on the end of the six months? But other than that, it doesn't sound like we have a lot of other flexibility that...
So some of the feedback from the committee members, if I can share a little bit of that, is part of it has been the agony of the kind of the yo-yo effect of, hey, you got to move out, and, oh, wait, you can stay. No, you got to move out, and you can stay. And so there's some committee members that really are like, we just need to rip the Band-Aid off, because we know that we're moving forward, there's going to be development there, and this back-and-forthing of not knowing is painful. So that was part of the conversation. The committee could not come to any consensus, except for, you know, as long as we could wait until they got more results from the survey, that they would feel more comfortable on establishing an extension to that date. So that's why, that's kind of the recommendation.
So could you sort of speak to the calendar of, so if we get the survey results and we say, okay, this is what needs to be built, do we go back to Bryn Gray and say, this is what the survey told us needed to be built? How long would it take you to develop, you know, the plan for that? How long would it take before that was actually started? I mean, what would be the schedule?
So we'll get the survey results, and I'll say by the end of January. To do that, we would still have to make, identify and board approve the recommendation that they have for Malloy Park. So if you just say by the end of January, we'd have that. And then depending on what those results are, reconnect with Bryn Gray and move forward. They have done a lot of work upfront, but by the time you get through the process, through the town of Minton, you're looking at at least a six-to-nine-month period for development approval.
Does that put us into October?
In of 2020 would be an aggressive schedule, so even if it was...
So if we already know that that's an aggressive schedule, does it make sense to ask the group to move out in June? I mean, I'm not trying to make it harder for you. I understand, but I...
No, I understand. I'm just trying to bring forward the committee's recommendation.
No, I understand.
I think that what we are cautious of, as Sandy mentioned earlier, is this emotional yo-yo of being told, you can stay, you can go, you can stay, you can go, and the toll that that takes on families. So we would like to get the report data and determine what our long-term plan looks like, so we can stop giving the mixed messages. So in January, we think that we can provide them with something that's going to be a lot more reliable than anything that we could tell folks right now.
I mean, I agree. It doesn't make sense to have them move out any sooner than they need to, but I think the goal of the committee was to define what that date is and have more solid information after the January meeting.
But so where we stand today is December 30th would be the deadline to extend the six-month date? Are we going to be asking them to have patience with us until the January 30th? And then we'll be able to come up with a fixed time then? I mean, I know this is an information and discussion item only, so there will be no vote, and there's no change we can make this evening, just clarifying for the audience. But I think people would be wanting to know if we can give them a little bit more hope on when we're going to make the final decision.
So I would say that that would be no later than the second meeting in January. The difficulty that we're going to have by not extending it at this point is because then we officially move into giving the six-month notice. In doing so, that's emails, that's certified letters, that's notices on the doors of their homes, saying that you have to move out by June 30th. If we come back in January and say, okay, you have until October 31st, then we go through the process, do the informal notification of October 31st, and then when we get at that six-month mark, again, we do the official certified letters, notes on the doors, and all of that.
So seeing that the current direction is the end of June and that we won't have another meeting between now and six months prior to that, will those official notices have to happen at the end of December? I'm sorry if I'm not understanding...
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Which is what has to happen anyway, because we can't make, this is not an action item. Right?
Right. I mean, that's what I'm looking at right here, discussion and information. So how, what's our communication plan for letting them know we're up against a six-month deadline, but that the more information is coming in at the end of January or mid-January?
So that would all be through a formal certified letter, an email. I would personally like to go meet with all of them again and explain where we're at and why.
All right, so we're going to apologize for getting delayed and between holidays and board schedule and information, and beg patience and perseverance for the residents, that we're going to do our best, but we have to follow our policies and procedures, but to know that we are expecting to have the significant more amount, more information coming to us in January, and where this will be an action item and no later than the second meeting in January. Am I on track?
What happens then? How do you rescind the...
You can always extend the move-out date. You just can't give less than a six-month notice.
I see.
All right, I don't think that's the answer anybody wanted to hear, but that's where we are, and hopefully you all understand, and we're going to do our best. And we heard you about the yo-yo effect. We heard you about the stability and the stress on your families. If you can just please be patient, and especially like the comment about the safety and the egress with that one road, and that'll be a big topic for the developers.
Right, and that actually is on the agenda and definitely aware of that. In fact, part of the development in Malloy Park includes an upgraded, updated water tank that has enough water to help with any of those forest fires.
Oh, as well for the firefighting, as well as for the residents to drink and for all of the development?
Yeah, it's more for the fire issue as far as meeting that, but the town within our requirements, we have the additional water taps to meet all the water requirements for the residents, including the new development.
Great. You have anything else more for us?
No, I just wish that I had a different answer. I mean, really, bringing forward the recommendation of the committee and going forward from there.
Anyone else have any more questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. Sure.
And thanks to all the residents for your patience and understanding. And we know this is a challenging time, but we're going to try to get the right product at the right timeline in the long run. All right, and we'll jump back into... You're probably still on then with the 3A-
Yeah, I'm going to just stay right here.
Business operations. 3A Agreed Upon Procedures Final Report Presentation.
All right. As I get started here, I'm going to invite two others to come up to the table here with me. We have Matthew Miller from McMahon and Associates, who is the independent auditor and the firm that did the agreed-upon procedures report for the 3A committee. And then also a 3A committee member, John Lee, is here also. And so I'm just going to kind of set this up for them, but as a reminder, we have had the 3A committee in place since shortly after the November 2016 election. It's part of the ballot language requirement. The purpose of the committee is really to review our expenditures and monitoring them that they're spent in accordance with the various categories that we have identified within the ballot language. And so throughout time, our committee attendance has been a little challenging with minimal people attending and numerous turnover in the committee. We've actually came back to the board, I think, twice now to update the committee members, and we'll be back again in January because we've lost another one already. So we had came to the board before and asked for permission to engage an independent auditor to do these agreed-upon procedures, and that's where McMahon and Associates has came into place. And that was by the direction of the few members that we had on the oversight committee to help us and help them clarify their role and ensure that we were spending accordingly. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Matt, and then he's going to kind of go through the procedures that they did and the final report.
So my name is Matt Miller, and I'm with McMahon and Associates. I'm the CPA who oversaw the 3A agreed-upon procedures. I also oversee your financial statement audit. So the 3A ballot question kind of has three main components that you have to comply with. How much you can collect, what you're supposed to spend the money on, and what you're not supposed to spend the money on. And so we have kind of five procedures that test those areas. So if we kind of jump into it, the first one is how much you can collect. So it started in 2017, and it's property tax money, so you levy it through the counties. So you guys collect from three counties, Eagle County, Garfield County, and Route County. And so what we do is we pull the mill levy certification, which is from each county, and that's basically how they collect your property taxes and then what they remit back to you. And so we add up what you did at all three to make sure that in 2017, you didn't collect more than eight million. And then you're allowed to increase what you collect each year based on a consumer price index. And so we did the exact same thing for 2018 to make sure that the eight million plus what is, what the consumer price index was for the year was what you collected. And so for 2017 and 2018, you did not collect more than you were allowed to under 3A. Procedures two, three, and four relate to what you're supposed to spend the money on. And so as part of the engagement letter, the district has to make representations to us, which is basically what you spent the money on and how much. So the first procedure under the section number two is related to two categories that are salary. So the first one was attract and retain, and the second one is reduce class size and restore programs. And if we go with attract and retain first, that was kind of an easier one for us to test. So the district spent 4.1 million on that, 3A money during 2017 fiscal year, 2017, 2018. And the way that we tested that was there was a standard bump given across all applicable categories, so that excludes senior district administrative staff. So basically, we looked at 2016, 2017 to see what you paid out, calculated what that increase would be if you did it right now, and then we looked at what you spent on salaries and staff in 2017, 2018 to see, do we see that increase reflected? The second item that we looked at was the reduce class size and restore programs. And so that kind of calculation is driven off of FTEs, which would be the full-time equivalents. So that's staff you have in the building that fall into a specific category compared to your pupil count. And so to test that, we started with your budget for those items to see how you or what FTEs you thought you needed to add to drive down that ratio and kind of where they would go based on your projected pupil count. Then we looked at the actual FTE changes between 2016 and 17 to 2017 and 2018 by school and then the actual pupil counts to see where the increases were and then quantify them. And so the district says that they spent a little over two million on that. And so we were able to calculate that you spent at least what you stated on those two items. Procedures three and four relate to kind of the other money that you did spend, and so that's either something that the district purchased or money that was passed through to the charter school. So we pulled all invoices over 50,000, and then we used a statistical sample to pull at least 25 invoices from all of the other expenditures. And everything that we looked at fell within what would be 3A expenses. And then we also scanned down that to see if there's just anything that looks funny in there, and nothing stuck out to us. And then the last procedure, number five, relates to what you're not supposed to spend the money on, and that is senior district administrative staff. And so to test that, we looked at payroll for positions that were defined as senior district administrative staff, and we looked at what was paid in 2016, 2017 compared to 2017, 2018. And what we're looking for is something that would go above and beyond, like, let's say, a standard cost of living change. And we also look at W2s, so those are on a calendar year. So we looked at 16, 17, and 18 to see that there's also no other taxable items included in there. And basically, through all of the payroll records that we went through, there was nothing that we identified that would stick out as above and beyond, let's say, a standard cost of living that's budgeted for at a flat 3% or something like that. So with that, I'll leave it open to any questions you may have. All right. You're up.
You can grab that one if you want.
Yeah, I think it's this one. Hello, my name is John Lee, and I'm the designated second draft spokesperson for the 3A committee. And first of all, on behalf of the committee, just wanted to thank you for listening to the recommendation to engage McMahon. I think it was extremely helpful from a peace of mind standpoint. It's quite complicated. And some of the challenges, I've been on the committee for a year now, and we have a new batch of folks as well, I guess, third round. So it's a constant challenge to get everyone up to speed that, look, our only responsibility is to identify if, from a citizens oversight committee, whether or not funds have been allocated to the appropriate buckets. And they have, that's the good news. You know, we haven't found any misuse of funds. We also, as a committee, would encourage the Board of Education to consider an annual engagement as perhaps either part of the existing audit that you guys do or a separate rider. I think that's helpful. The committee also identified that we felt like it would be worthwhile to include the Charter Academy separately as part of that analysis. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, is it was a limited analysis or audit as for the Charter Academy. There was a couple of questions that came up, nothing to raise any eyebrows today, but enough for us to recommend that we look at that in a little bit more detail. And then there was also a recommendation to consider possibly having an RFP. McMahon does the districts as well as the Charter Academies, so it, from the appearance of the committee, it might make sense just to at least have gone through the process to take a look at, you know, a couple of other potential auditors in that process. So, good news. Everything looks good from our perspective. So, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Any questions on that? We had an in-depth audit report before, and we were shown the Charter Academy's 3A spreadsheet today at a work session, and we appreciate your time and thoroughness in looking through our numbers and keeping us on track. Everyone's good? Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen. It's Sandy. And then, hmm? Oh, it's an action item.
Okay. I've moved to approve the 3A Agreed Upon Procedures Final Report as well as the committee's recommendation to have agreed-upon procedures perform on an annual basis throughout the term of November 2016, 3A mill levy override.
A second.
Are there further comments or questions? No, Missy?
Thank you. Mr. Omanza.
Hi.
Mrs. Alter.
Hi.
Mrs. Caccarella.
Hi.
Mrs. Jarno.
Hi.
Dr. Long.
Hi.
Mrs. Stecker.
Hi.
Mrs. Tivarkunis.
Hi.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
All right, great. And then we have another action item, which is the certification of the 2019 calendar year mill levy.
Okay, so this is something that we get to do annually, where we come and get the mill levies certified. And you have within your agenda item a timeline of all the dates that we go through that we have to meet. Our biggest date is that we have by December 15th to certify all the mill levies, and we have our counties that have until December 11th. And so we always have to wait kind of to the very last minute to put all the certifications together, and they can give us revised ones throughout this time period until the 15th. But we have put together the mill levy certification resolution, and on that you can see the different mills by fund as well as the assessed value and then those related dollars that they generate by county. And so tonight, with the resolution, you're being asked to certify the mills for the general fund of 17.196, the transportation fund by .316, and the bond fund by 6.728, for a total of 24.24 mills and a total generation of dollars of $76,744,686. The way we do this, just so that you understand how that works, is with the assessed value and the number of mills, they're set to generate a certain number of dollars. And so some of our mill levy overrides are static, they haven't moved. For instance, transportation is a million-dollar mill levy. And so as the assessed value goes up, the mill levy goes down, and we continue to just generate the million dollars. And time when the assessed values go down, then the mill levies go up. So when we look at that overall, you're looking at a reduction on here, and I believe it's of 8.75% in mills compared to last year. Sorry, 8.75 mills, an 8.97% reduction from the prior year. So this is an action item, but if you have any questions, more information on how this works, I'd be more than happy to address that.
Want to do it?
Are there any questions? We just taking you into to process this? Is this one part of the deeper part of the financing? When it's a set level, yeah, the mills adjust, and then if it's a... Is there ever a set mill, then the money adjusts to? Or is it...
Yeah, but we don't have any like that.
We don't have that here.
I'm... Excuse me. I moved to approve Resolution 2019-20-8 resolving that the Board of Education of Eagle County School District RE 50J hereby certifies the mill levy for the general transportation and bond redemption funds to the Board of County Commissioners of the counties wherein said school district is located.
I see.
Any further questions or discussion?
Okay. Mr. Omanza.
Hi.
Mrs. Alter.
Hi.
Mrs. Caccarella.
Hi.
Mrs. Jarno.
Hi.
Dr. Long.
Hi.
Mrs. Stecker.
Hi.
Mrs. Tivarkunis.
Hi.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sandy, and to Chelsea and the finance team for all the work you all do for us. Oh, we have... Who's this? Melissa Ruon Thuan. We're moving into public interest items for discussion. I don't think I've skipped anything. The approval of the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between Eagle County, Colorado and Eagle County School District for the funding of mental health counselors for Eagle County schools.
Because this is an intergovernmental agreement, that's why we're bringing it forth to the board to be aware. This is a, just an amendment, basically an extension of the contract that we signed last year with the county. It's the 1A funding that goes towards our mental health counselors, our contract with the Hope Center. And that's why you do have the report from the Hope Center in there. To date this school year, they've served over nine, or they've had over 996 contacts with students. If you just want to look through that report, it's very self-explanatory, but it gives you a lot of good information about the types of services that they're providing to our students. This year, really the only difference, we're just adding another year onto the contract. There is a reduction, the amount of money from the county. It was 320,000 the prior year, it's going to be 240,000 this year. We are still able to keep the same services without increasing the cost to the district at this point because they hired some counselors a little bit after the start of the contract. And so we have a carryover of that amount of money. So there is no additional cost to us to keep that same level of service this year.
So then what happens going forward?
It does wane back again next year. I believe it goes to 200,000. And then we would go back and come to consensus about how we would continue that funding. The Hope Center has been looking for a lot of other sources for funding to keep that going. They do have a proposal to the Eagle Valley Behavioral Health right now to increase the number of counseling services available, therapeutic services through the Hope Center to our community. If that goes through by their board, it would actually increase up to six additional staff members that would be able to meet the needs of students in our community.
Is there a specific timeline for them reviewing that request, or is it sort of...
Their board meeting is on the 16th.
So it'll be in that for...
So we'll know very quickly when that funding could come through. You know, and we've continued to only have positive results from those interactions of students with the therapist in our community. The schools keep telling us that they are grateful, very grateful for the support that they are receiving with the students. And we do continue to see those at-risk behaviors of our students that we would not be able to meet or to give them the right sort of service at the time of crisis, and this is providing a very, very needed service in our community. So this agreement will go to the Board of Commissioners. We're just bringing it to you first so that we don't have to go the other way around, and they will sign it this month. So, any questions?
Thank you so much for keeping us informed and for sharing that very comprehensive report from the Hope Center. I think it's great to have that information and know who's at which school and really what the true impact is looking like of these funds. And I'm always amazed in looking at the reports from even just being a year in with this partnership, how many students are able to serve and what types of needs they're recognizing. And with that, I would move to approve the First Amendment to the Agreement between Eagle County and Eagle County School District for Funding of Mental Health Counselors for Eagle County Schools.
I second.
Further comments or questions?
Sorry about that. Lost my screen for two seconds. Mr. Omanza.
Hi.
Mrs. Alter.
Hi.
Mrs. Caccarella.
Hi.
Mrs. Jarno?
Hi.
Dr. Long?
Hi.
Mrs. Stecker?
Hi.
Mrs. Tivarkounis?
Hi.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Okay. But if we can just indulge me here, before we go into the census resolution, let's just take a minute. It's one of our topics we learned about at CASB. So we divided and conquered the things that we learned. Four days spent down there, I think the, one of the most important things we accomplished was to gel as a team and to get to know each other as a new board. The conversations we had and the time we spent together is going to enable us to move forward and work really smoothly together. And then we spent the first day with new board members and new board member training, and I sat with them to look at the whole process with the beginner's eye again to make sure that we all were on the same page as what we, the skills that we're supposed to have and the CASB thinks we're supposed to have. And the veterans went into the mental health session. Then we had our retreat. And then I got to spend some time learning and reviewing about policy. We're a policy governance board. So that means that the board has its own set of policies that we follow. And you can see, if you're looking at our agendas at all, that they're linked. In each agenda item, there's some policy that we are tied to that gives us a legal basis into what we're doing, right? Why are we talking about this at all? It's because it's directly tied to a policy that we govern. The board has the ability, the authority to hire the one employee, the superintendent, and then all of the administrative duties and the administrative policies are then delegated through the superintendent out to the staff. We, they did say, I should look up if we can find our policy on policy adoption, which I thought was kind of funny. And then they did remind us to make sure we know where to find our grievance and complaint policy, which I think is in our administrative policies and not in our governance policies. But that's not as funny, but it's important for us to know where it is and what the letters are in that. And see, what are there good notes here? It's important to make sure that your policies are consistent, and it's the cornerstone of effective governance. Policy is the voice of the board. It speaks when the board is not convened and has the force of law in the district. They were careful to remind us that, which is very interesting, school board meetings are meetings held publicly, but they're not public meetings, as you saw when we engaged with the, as we did not engage with the public, just listening to them, which is why we have our meetings recorded and we're going to try to improve viewership because we want the public to know what we're doing. And that's why, that's why we're here, and we want to be sure we're representing our constituents. The most powerful thing that I learned when we're down there is that we're doing actually a pretty good job, not to get too cocky, but we do a lot of hard work and we have a really high-quality team, and I'm thrilled to be a part of it. So, on that note, we'll just have everyone share their little bit, which one of the items will be about the census. Start with Michelle.
Sure, I'll kick it off. As Kate mentioned, a couple of us the first day got to spend the whole day in sessions around mental health. And I chose that topic to highlight here tonight. In those sessions, we heard themes like, and I appreciate how they really tied in equity with mental health and looking at some themes we see statewide and then we see here locally as well, as far as disparities within the mental health realm and with risky behaviors and certain needs among our student populations. One question that was posed in a session that I really liked was, you know, we talk a lot about we're doing it for the kids. Everything we do is for the kids, to really challenge ourselves into thinking, you know, which kids and how and why, so deeper than just the all. I've also heard recently changing the terminology from for all kids and all students to each, just to honor students from different backgrounds and unique perspectives and opportunities we have to connect with them. Also, along the mental health realm, there were some great, I guess, cases shared from how certain districts and typically in partnership with community agencies are looking at staff training. It was great to reflect on how we're doing with mental health first aid training in our community. I know we've recently had more individuals, including Mr. Almanza from our board here, trained as a trainer in mental health first aid. Some more opportunities to expand that training, both with district staff but also community partners. We really need to, you know, all be having that common understanding and speaking the same language. And then lastly, a piece of mental health conversations at CASB that I think is so critical is student involvement, how we can engage our students in mental health conversations to really hear firsthand. You know, we see a lot of data. We're very fortunate to have a lot of data around, you know, whether it's Hope Center and their, their cases that they're seeing school to school or Healthy Kids Colorado survey data or other assessments that are happening. We have a lot of information, but the value of being able to hear that direct student perspective on what they're facing, concerns for their peers, how they might want or need help, and then comparing that to what's available was great. I appreciated that there were student panels in a couple of the sessions I attended, so being able to hear directly from young people from around the state. And just like Kate mentioned with the policy governance piece, overall, I felt really proud of where our district is at in prioritizing mental health and resources when we can towards supporting students. Great timing following up on Melissa's presentation. It's a great reminder to have those challenging conversations and push our comfort zones just to better understand needs and how we can support students and staff and our broader community. Thanks.
I was fortunate enough to attend a meeting with Great Ed Colorado. They've been advocates for education funding in the state of Colorado for 15-plus years. And I've heard them speak probably nine or 10 years ago, but it's been a long time. So it's always great to go hear Lisa Wiles from there talk about really how Colorado is drastically underfunded for education. And it was really interesting to be there, too, and there was a lot of very small rural districts in participating in the session as well as, you know, much bigger schools. But the reality is, is that Colorado, for a very wealthy, educated state, we do not place an emphasis on education funding. In the post-9/11 economic downturn, our state revenue fell dramatically, and we've yet to recover from those statistics from those times. So we're actually getting, I think, less per people now, adjusted at least, I think, than we were then. Don't quote me on all the facts. You guys should go look at the Great Education Colorado website because it's really awesome. A little depressing sometimes, but very, very informative. And there's some kind of crazy statistics on the website that just talk about, you know, Colorado is 49th in number of novice teachers in the classroom. We all know that having qualified, trained, amazing educators in front of our kids is really what matters most to our kids. You know, we have certain fixed costs, things like transportation, heat, employee benefits. So essentially, when we are underfunded, it affects the classroom and programs needed to be cut, and there's less programs available. So yay for 3A. We're very fortunate that we've got 3A in our district, and it's, I'm sure, helped a tremendous amount, and it's probably not quite enough because, you know, but it's been amazing and we, we need that 3A money. It helps backfill some of the holes. And just a couple more crazy statistics. We're 47th in per pupil funding, basically, in the nation. We are 42nd in our poverty gap. So there's, there's a lot of just really crazy and somewhat depressing statistics. We are about $2,700 below the national average per pupil if we adjust it for regional cost differences. And 50% of the districts, this was actually interesting for me, 50% of the school districts in Colorado are now on a four-day week. So, yeah, we need more funding, but yay for 3A. And we're doing great work, and I think Eagle County School District does a pretty amazing job with very little resources and working it all out, so.
Thanks, Kelly.
Actually, do you want to? But along those lines, I actually attended a different session that Great Education, well, Lisa Wile spoke at, and it was also, I can't remember the name of the organization, but it's got 2020 in it, and it's basically a group in Colorado that's looking at what will be proposed on the ballot in 2020. Yeah, it's something folk, future 2020 or so. But they are actually looking for input on, there are a few different options of possibilities in terms of repealing Tabor, repealing Tabor and replacing it with something else, or going with something more similar to what they've done in the past. It was a pretty interesting discussion, but they're definitely looking for input from out in the field. And so if you went to the Great Ed website, I think it would lead you to be able to fill out that survey. And I think it would be helpful to them as the more input they have, I think the better direction they'll have, so. And all I'll say, all that I will say about that is that I admire their perseverance because some of these people have been working on this issue for over 20 years and have been, you know, beaten down time and time again in our state. And it's just remarkable to me how committed they still are to this cause and how upbeat they are about the possibilities for making a change in the future, so.
I'd like to speak to the keynote that I heard from Kai Kite. Kai's a performance violinist and a composer. And I think the thing that I took away from his presentation was, don't play air violin in an orchestra. His point was, if you're going to do something, learn how to do it well and be present. Understand your role. Do it well all the time and don't just warm the chair when you're in a meeting or you're in a role. Be active, be involved, understand as much as you can about it so that you can have an impact.
Thank you. And now?
I also wanted to mention one of the keynote speakers. Her name is Rosalind Wiseman, and she actually lives in Boulder but is a bestselling author. She wrote Queen bees and wannabes, which was sort of the impetus for Mean Girls. And then she also, more recently, has written a book about boys, helping our boys cope with, or it's actually Masterminds and Wingman, and it's, again, focused on sort of the interpersonal skill or relationships between boys. She followed a student panel where there were students who are, they attend CASB in what's called the Student Strand and spent a couple days, school leaders discussing issues across the state. And they come from a variety of backgrounds, rural to big-city schools. And I felt like she has just an uncanny knack for being able to understand what it feels like to be a student and to relate to what's important to them and what they feel like. And I guess one of the biggest takeaways would, which isn't surprising to any of us, was the importance of relationships, particularly teacher to student. She talked about, you know, nobody ever hated school because their math teacher was hard. They hated school because their math teacher didn't, they weren't fair, they weren't building a relationship with them and helping them to be successful. She also spent time talking about sort of the difference between respect and dignity and that respect is earned. And I thought that was an easy, an interesting comment that was well-received from the students who were there. They would snap their fingers whenever they agreed with something that she said, and it was very clear that they really felt like they had been heard. She had a few ideas for us as board members in terms of how to listen to people and respond and in a way that is more accurate. So for example, not saying, I know how you feel, but saying, you know, that must be really hard for you and things like, like that. So I thought it was incredible, and I'd love to look into the possibility of potentially bringing her to, her here at some point to do some PD. I think it connects closely with the equity work in terms of having students be heard and making sure that all students feel like they're connected, so.
First and foremost, I want to thank you for the opportunity of assisting CASB. It was an amazing experience, and there was a lot of information that it was needed for us to get a better understanding of what we're supposed to be doing and not doing more than anything. But I decided to highlight the census one, which, thank you for bringing it up as well. But I'll just highlight a couple of the things that I learned. And to many of you, probably makes a lot of sense what the census is and what they do and whatnot, but when it was put on in a classroom with a interactive map on half of a classroom, and we all took our shoes off, and then there was the Colorado map, and you just had to go out and, and put cones over the big cities and then read statistics about the population and all this, it just clicked for some reason, and it hadn't been for me. And I was like, oh, wow. I mean, it really emphasized the importance of counting every single person, not for, to know what they're doing and what, what's going on, but more, more than anything because the state wants to know how many people there are and how many people, the budget, so to speak, it goes to. And then there's also this, I don't even know how to explain, there's this map that Dustin Swagner and his team brought up. It was a map of, on one side of the, of the map, they put like pennies. It was 10 pennies, stacks of pennies, and then they would divide it in sections, and we all had to play with dinosaurs and just put it on the squares, and those represent the communities and the people or, or the cities, whatever we wanted to do it. And basically, they told us, we used cups to cover those toys, and the ones covered would represent the ones that were missing from the census, the ones, the people that didn't get counted. And then they went over and explained to us how if they only count so many people, then there's so many, so much money that gets sent out to that community. And if someone's not counted, then they're not going to send out the money, so to speak. But the need for the assistance is there, the people are still there, it's just that they're not counted for. So that's, that's when I was like, oh, wow. It really matters to have people count, just accounted for. And another important or kind of cool video that they showed us, it's under the census.gov. And it's a, it's a link to a YouTube video, and it's a song, and it comes in different languages, and one of them is in, one of them is in English and then Spanish, and I believe there's a few other versions of that video. And I'm not going to sing it, but I want you guys to go over and then just kind of look at it, and it makes sense. So I don't know if I was, I was just at a different impression of what the census was or it just went over my head or something, but I really appreciate it. It was a very informed, interactive and interesting course, so thank you.
So I thought it was awesome to be a part of the CASB and take so many different classes. There was so much information, so much learning. By Sunday, I was in a haze. So today I was reading through my notes, because I took a lot of notes and I have a lot of material, and something that I got inspired by was advocacy. And I attended a panel of high school students that talk about issues in their high schools that I feel are issues in all of Colorado, like vaping, mental health, drug abuse. And as I was reading through my notes, I found the ones where I, this is what I took from that class, that if you want to be a good advocate, you got to stay informed with issues in your schools and see what's happening around you. Build relationships. Remember you are part of a team because you cannot do it alone. Ask questions and definitely talk to children because they're the ones that will tell you what the real deal is. So, yeah.
Let's see, I get the, there's a consensus that, at least for new board members, I felt like kind of drinking from the fire hose, for sure. I felt like there was maybe a month's worth of information. They tried to cram into three days. And the funnest part for me was definitely getting to know everybody and spending time together and learning our personal stories. I accidentally went to the Rural Education Alliance. I thought they were, they had, seemed to have a better breakfast, so I was there. And it was very, it was almost like coming home to me because I'm from a very small rural community in central Illinois. 17 in my high school class, 75 in my whole high school. And a lot of the people who were speaking at this, at this particular workshop, similar situations. Everyone's, everyone's concerned about the funding, the formula, all the situations. Everyone's, everyone's concerned about the funding, the formula, all those things. The thing that was, was compelling to me was the way the communities approached their problems. They, it seemed that no one was waiting for, you know, the state to come up with the money. Instead, they were trying to make some relationships with industries. They were trying to make arrangements with taxpayers, not necessarily through a mill levy, but they were just trying to use the resources they had around them in more creative and productive ways. And I thought that was, that was a great approach. The last speaker of the Casby conference was Don Hadad. And I knew nothing about St. Vrain, but I'm sure when people hear that in this state, it seems like they probably run a shiver, shiver goes down your back. His second year of being a superintendent, I guess, his CFO came in and said, we've been making some terrible mistakes, and we're $14 million in the hole. And he was all excited about starting his second year, and this was the news he heard from what he said on the first day. So he didn't know what to do for a while, but he called the state comptroller and says, this is what's happened. We need, you know, we need help. And they loaned him 14 million. And that was 12 years ago, 12 or 14 years ago, I'm not sure. But he started some creative networking, worked with industries in the area, started realigning the curriculum, started working on areas that industry was looking for employees for. And I don't want, long story short, it's probably too late for that. But now, he says they're sitting on about $120 million endowment, from which they get $3 million in interest each year. So each, I feel like, I know, I appreciate the effort that people are going through in trying to redo the funding formula. I guess, I guess I feel like, I hope that happens. But I know that there are opportunities in our communities for us to work with industries, for us to work with small businesses, large businesses, other ways of working, engaging taxpayers, and other people. And there are ways to, to attack these problems. And I think that inspiring people to work together in different ways is what I took away from Don Hadad. And I think it took a long time, I mean, 10 or 12, possibly even 14 years. But I know that's a good way to get out of challenges that a lot of our communities face. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for, again, for the recap, and for the time that you took away from your family and the weekend we all spent together. We really appreciate it. So we will move back on to the official agenda, and we have a resolution in support of the census. You want to walk us through that, Melissa?
Yeah. So I think that we know in general what the census does, but what it does for public schools and the public school system, the two biggest pots that are determined by the census are Title I, funding for disadvantaged youth. On a federal level, we receive $15.8 billion, based on census data, for those funds, and for special education grants to the states, which is about $12.3 billion. So in our community, we know we run the risk of our Latino and undocumented population not wanting to give information to the census because of fear of government information collection. And it is really important that we do the best that we can do to encourage all of our families to count each and every one in our census information. You know, we did have the reduction in our applications for free reduced lunch, we believe, because of political climate kinds of pieces. So everything that we can do to help our families trust and encourage them to participate in the census is really important in our community. Some states, they estimate they're underfunding, if they undercount their Latino and undocumented population in Texas and Florida alone, would be a loss of $480 million for those two states in funding. So we can just put it on our own scale. But we do know that we've already lost some of our title funding, and we will for next year, because of our changes in our free and reduced lunch numbers. So for the support of our families that need extra support in our community is really important for us to support the efforts of the census. As district employees, and I think as board members, as you've gone to different presentations in the state, you see that the Census Bureau is at everything, because they really, really, really are encouraging us to help them make sure that we are counting everyone. And the message out to our families is the census is important. It's safe, and it's easy. So there's online ways to participate in the census. You don't have to have anybody come to your home. You know, if we can encourage people to do that, if they want to do it in a more anonymous way, I think that it is important for us to do that. And we also did say that, through our communications department, we can help get the message out on the importance of the census. So there is a link to a little video. I'm not sure, do we have time to show it for the viewers? It's like two minutes? Okay. Hopefully, the sound will work. Oh. I'll try it on mine, because it works on mine. One second, I'll plug in.
Since the census is only done every 10 years, it's, I've been racking my brains on how it was filled out last time. And it is an anonymous process, right? It doesn't actually get anyone's names. It's all about numbers and demographics, but it's still going to be a hard sell.
Beginning in March, the U.S. Census Bureau will invite households across the country to participate in the 2020 census. Simply put, the census is a headcount of every person living in the United States. To be sure the government represents the people, the U.S. Constitution requires a population count every 10 years. Ever since 1790, the census has determined the number of seats each state receives in the U.S. House of Representatives. It is, and always has been, a cornerstone of our democracy. We still use it to determine representation, but leaders also use the data to make decisions. Your response helps guide planning for the future of our communities. The 2020 census will help inform decisions on how billions of dollars are allocated annually for critical public services like roads, schools, hospitals, and healthcare clinics, fire and emergency response services, and hundreds of other programs. In 2020, for the first time, you'll be able to complete the census online, by phone, or by mail. It asks a few simple questions, like how many people live in your home on April 1st, including their age and sex, and if there are any children living there. You should know that by law, all census responses are completely confidential, and your personal information cannot be shared with any law enforcement agencies. Every person counts, no matter who you are or where you live. So whether your family has participated for decades, or the 2020 census will be your first, we all have a role in shaping the future of our country.
That's great. The more we can educate folks, the better off we're all going to be, because our state's growing quite a bit.
And so school districts across the country are completing resolutions, like the one that we are proposing that our board take tonight. And I can read the resolution, or if maybe the secretary would like to read the resolution? Can you get it up?
Thank you. So this is the resolution affirming the importance of the 2020 census for Eagle County Schools. Whereas the decennial census occurs every 10 years to enumerate every person residing in the United States, and it's fundamental to ensuring that all residents of our school district and communities have access to fair representation, essential services, and economic development. And whereas, an accurate count of persons living in the school district and communities in the 2020 census is vital to determining the representation of individuals, families, and communities in our local, state, and federal governments. And whereas, the 2020 census count of children living in Eagle County will be the basis of federal education funding allocated to our schools over the next 10 years, specifically the federal program serving our students living in poverty and students with disabilities. And whereas, population data derived in the 2020 census will be used by both government and businesses to determine services and investments, like libraries, health clinics, and grocery and retail stores. And whereas, the decennial census has historically undercounted populations in large rural areas such as ours. And whereas, the populations that are prevalent in rural areas like the county of Eagle are at high risk of being undercounted, including young children, people of color, low-income households, language and minority families, foreign-born residents, and households with limited internet access, according to the U.S. Census Bureau. And whereas, children are more likely to be missed in the census count if they reside in the complex households that are also common in rural areas, such as multi-generational, multi-generation households, extended families, and multifamily households. And whereas, during the 2020 census, there is a heightened risk of an undercount due to the digital divide, language access issues, and local community mistrust in the federal government. And whereas, local and state governments, as well as community-based organizations, can play a critical role in counteracting the undercount risks, reaching hard-to-count populations, and ensuring their communities get counted in 2020. And whereas, it is paramount for the school board, superintendent, principals, teachers, parent organizations, and all local leaders in the community to communicate the importance of Census 2020 to families and community members to ensure everyone is counted. Therefore, be it resolved that Eagle County Schools will take action to ensure a complete count of all students and their families residing within the school district on the 2020 census. And be it further resolved, Eagle County School District is committed to working in partnership with other local civic, business, and community leaders, the state of Colorado, and others, to engage, educate, and count every resident in our communities and county of Eagle in the 2020 census. Approved this 11th day of December 2019, do I say that yet? Did we officially approve it yet?
We have to vote.
Okay.
So I ask for your, your action on this item.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2019-20-7, the resolution affirming the importance of the 2020 census for the Eagle County Schools, RE 50J, Community.
One second.
Are there further comments or questions? Is he?
Mr. Almaza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varounis?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you all for your support.
Great. And who has got the next one? Dr. Jarno. We are rolling through here. So we have some updates to our open enrollment policy.
That one, okay, got the right one. I think the most efficient way to look at this would be to draw your attention to the redlined JFBA-R policy. That kind of outlines the changes that we've made. I met with elementary school principals last spring. We had a super productive meeting, open enrollment. As you'll remember, we made some changes to last year in terms of focusing on community schools and school visitations. And at that meeting, we first started with, what is our philosophy around this? We've been through a lot of different iterations of open enrollment in our district, dating from a period of time where schools were encouraged to create their own individual identities with different programs, like dual enrollment, or IB, or expeditionary learning. Then we had an administration, we made some policy changes in an attempt to use open enrollment to address demographic balance. That really kind of backfired on us a little bit. And so, meeting with the elementary school principals, we really started with, what is our philosophy? And they all felt very strongly, and it was unanimous, that our philosophy is around neighborhood schools, community schools, and really getting kids to attend their address, how do we put it in here? Their address school, the school nearest to their physical address. I can't find the actual wording. But we changed that wording last year, so that it, it really talked about the community school. So the changes that we've made this year are really to continue the reflection of that. We also, when we required folks to attend an information meeting, or meet with the principal at their community school last year, we had some unintended consequences, where because we accept open enrollment and address open enrollment applications in terms of when they are timestamped, so when they come in. And so we ended up in a situation where we had families that had students already open enrolled, and a younger sibling was not in the running because they didn't visit, there were different messages. So we had to address that as well. So the changes that we're proposing on JFBA-R are under number three, criteria to determine open enrollment decisions. Letter B gave preference to specific programmatic desires, IB, dual language, or expeditionary learning. Since we don't have expeditionary learning school anymore, HPS follows some of the tenants, but they are not officially an expeditionary learning school. And we have a plethora of dual-language schools. That, that particular language was left over from when Edwards Elementary was our only dual-language school. And because the principals felt so strongly about the community school philosophy, we've struck that line entirely. Under letter C, we struck the expressed interest, we took out emails. Email is not an appropriate way to visit your community school. It would need to be in person, or a visit with the principal. So that language was struck. And then we also struck the line about kindergarten registration starts at a student's community school. We found last year that we were duplicating efforts. We were requiring student families to register their students at their community school, which was causing work for the registrars there, when they knew full well they were applying for open enrollment. So it doesn't make sense to have families or our registrars doing that work twice. So we're just going to require the registration to take place after the open enrollment decisions have been made. That works out particularly nicely this year, because we are changing our registration portal. We have ended our relationship with our previous provider, and are, have a new contract with Power School, so it works more seamlessly with our, our Power School portal. And that will not be ready until March. So no one will be able to register until after the open enrollment portion is done. And so we changed that language as well. We also, interestingly, a couple of schools have started, rather than using the term parents, have begun using the term families, because we have families of all different shapes and sizes and makeups. And so we just reflected that language in this as well. The other important changes were previously, under number 4A, we gave preference to students whose parent is an Eagle County School employee. In the past, it was an Eagle County Schools employee at the school they wished to attend. And we felt, and the principals felt, that that was unfair to some of our other employees, who may work in food services, or our district courier, for instance, who doesn't work at one specific school. And we felt that it was a professional courtesy to offer that preferential status to all employees of the district. In terms of, if you look down, the same, further in the policy, the language is just kind of duplicated, and we made those same changes elsewhere. One other change that, that we have made, which is not reflected in the policy, but is reflected in our procedures, is that for families who have a student already enrolled at their open enrollment school of choice, we are not requiring them to make a school visitation. So they do not have to attend the kindergarten information meeting, or meet with the So they do not have to attend the kindergarten information meeting, um, or meet with the principal. If they already have an older sibling at that school, clearly, they've made a choice, and they're going to want their younger siblings to go there. And as I mentioned, if we, um, as we ended up last year in a bind where, um, there were families who were going to have one student at Red Sandstone and one student at Red Hill, that's not going to work for a family. So we need to take into consideration, um, helping out our families who are, already have older siblings in the process. Um, so those are the changes that we've made. The other procedural change, again, not reflected in the policy, but just in our procedures, um, and those changes are outlined as well, um, in the changes in timeline document that was in your board agenda, um, is just the timeline, that, um, we also had some confusion between, uh, families who were applying for the ECCA lottery and applying for open enrollment, um, and that caused some issues. So, um, ECCA will be completing their lottery process before our open enrollment process. Um, this is the first year we're doing that. We're going to see how that goes. Um, and we may address that again next year. Um, so our, our timeline was moved back a little bit, um, to be the first, uh, couple of weeks of February, and then our decisions are made, um, after that. So those are the changes that we've proposed for this year. Um, I think that this is an ongoing, you'll probably see me back here every year addressing this policy, um, because it's, it's the kind of thing where we end up having some, sometimes unintended consequences. Um, and as I said, our philosophy has really shifted to a focus on the neighborhood school and getting away from competition between schools. Uh, we want all of our kids to have an amazing experience, no matter where they go, at any one of our, our district schools. Um, and so we really want to focus on that and less on, um, competition and, and schools selling themselves.
Thank you so much for presenting these proposals. I think these seem like great steps towards families getting to know their neighborhood school first. Um, uh, having gone through this process recently with a kindergarten right now, um, you know, it's always amazing and sometimes really shocking and hurt, uh, I don't know, hopeless almost, to hear some of the perceptions about schools that people have, uh, without even having stepped foot in schools. And my understanding, even this, this past year, uh, with the process, was that, uh, families were to go physically be at their neighborhood, neighborhood schools. And I think that was a pretty recent change, um, from the families that I spoke to, that was incredibly valuable, to help dispel misperceptions and, um, and just create that sense of pride. Um, like you said, we have so many amazing schools in our district, and I'm really excited about these steps towards, um, uh, working on our open enrollment process.
Any, any other questions? Just highlighting the importance of keeping policies up to date and keeping them accurate to reflect your philosophy and, uh, actual practices, um, is important. So, thank you for working on that. Just an action item.
I move to accept the modifications to the open enrollment policy as proposed by staff.
A second.
Further comments or questions? Missy?
Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varounis?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's Katie, I really hope that these, uh, changes lead to a smoother, more efficient process for you and Lori also. I know there's a tough time here.
Well, it certainly makes sense now that the portal will go through Power School, because it's one less program for parents and families to learn how to use. If they, if it helps them get into Power School from the very beginning, that, that'll be a big step forward. So as we move along here on the agenda, we're back to, out onto M with Board Policies and Administrative Regulations. And if you see all of these, I'm pretty sure they all have an asterisk, meaning that they were approved on the consent agenda. But just, um, keeping with my theme of policy, um, we did go over the majority of these at our retreat. The ones relating to boards committees, the president's rule, staff, um, relationships, the job description. So, um, these are all fresh in our minds, and, um, we may be starting the, I know that Phil's working on the administrative policies with the help of CASB, and, um, we last reviewed all of our governance policies in 2013, which seems like just yesterday, but it was really seven years ago. Uh, so, anyway, we, we're done with that? The personnel list was approved? And if we evaluate this meeting in, uh, terms of governance policies, I think we may have talked more about policies than anybody else really wants to, to hear about. But if you look, um, I really like how the new way we tie this with the live links into policy on our agenda. It's just a helpful reminder of what we're, we're trying to do and how we're trying to do it.
Can, can we go back to, um, where we do the new and old business? And typically, that has been a place where, um, if somebody had a topic that they wanted added in the future, um, that you'd bring it up?
Yes.
But I don't think we've really been doing that lately.
No, if there's not, yeah, we did, um, rush through that, but because of the amount of public participation that we had, um, if there's anything you want to add on the agenda, we're going to get that in for...
I mean, I'd just like to, um, have it noted that we would like to meet again with ECCA and discuss the potential to, uh, work with them, to create a more diverse environment.
Yes, we'll get that on the agenda for as soon as possible. Anything else here? Hopefully, uh, we always have time for an executive session, just in case. We're going to have the, I think it's the final round of the school improvement plans. Is that correct? And then Head Start Annual Training, which is important, um, for the federal funding with our youngest learners. Open Meetings Resolution, the SKEEN-Snowboard Academy sometimes has a slightly different calendar due to their unique circumstance, we'll need to approve that. Um, we, uh, have a letter that we write back and forth to the ECCA discussing the annual report that we received earlier this evening. We may get an update on the school-based health clinic, and, uh, Katie Jarno will talk to us about the customized pathways and our progress on that. Is there anything else? As always, if there's anything else that you board members need or need to come up, especially when we have a month-long break like this, feel free to contact me, and, uh, Phil and I will get it taken care of and put it in the packet in the appropriate manner.
I had a question about the letter, uh, email we got from CASB about the, uh, application deadline for Region 6 and 8. I think we're Region 8, is that correct, in CASB? And they're looking for a board of directors person? Is that something we must be involved in? Is that accurate?
Oh, um...
I got it just today, the email from CASB.
Region 8 needs to have a representative, um, but it doesn't have to come from our school board. I do intend to submit an application, so, um, we'll see how many other people do as well, and it'll go from there.
I was concerned about that.
Oh, I, I was...
16th is the deadline.
Monday, yeah.
Right, and when we're part of Region 8, but we are not all of Region 8, and so that's a deadline for the directors. And so, Ms. Shelley may, or may not be the only one, but she would submit an application, and then... It was Tessa's, uh, she filled that seat when she left, but doesn't mean that we have to fill her empty seat, but that Region 8.
And if I could just make a kind of an unrelated comment to that, with the two-week break coming up, and I know so many people in our community look forward to that, um, opportunity to unplug and recharge and, uh, take a break from academic schedules. I know there's a lot of kids in our community that struggle when there's breaks from school, and there's not those meals that they count on, and those warm, safe, loving environments. And so, I'm just trying to think forward about, um, making sure that we can try to recommend opportunities for support. There's a lot of great services out there, and, um, scholarships for programs during, um, school breaks and things like that, um, and just keeping those families in our thoughts that, um, uh, we're hoping that everybody can have a, a warm, safe, and well-fed holiday break.
Um, just to touch back into our, um, our questions here, and, um, we am open to comments and, um, changes on these, if they're not feeling, um, authentic enough for us at the end here. But did the meeting advance the goals and mission of the district? I hope so. And then did this meeting impact student learning? We had the really great, uh, school improvement plans at the beginning, and, um, what was the other thing in the work session?
The math.
The math? That was it. I knew there was something big in the work session, and it was the high school math update. So thanks to the math team for that. And with that, a happy, healthy, warm, and well-fed holiday season to everybody. Meeting adjourned.